Good afternoon and welcome to this meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Please be advised that this meeting is video and audio livestream on YouTube and the Commissioners' Facebook page. As is customary, we will open the meeting with prayer followed by the pledge. Please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. And as we come together to serve your children, we ask for your wisdom, guidance, as we make decisions on behalf of your children. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve. We ask that you would be with each individual who serves here in Washington County government. As we come together today for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Lord, we ask that you place a hedge protection around individuals who are at risk in our community. Allow us to be the hands and feet to put an end to this disease in our communities. We praise you, Lord, and we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Okay, we now have for our pledge of allegiance, a good friend of mine and a fellow Marine, Jeff Gallagher. He's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance today. He is a four-year veteran in the United States Marine Corps where he was on the flag detail for former President Jimmy Carter's inauguration. Today, he resides in Washington with his loving wife Jody of 33 years, four children, and nine grandchildren. He continues to serve his community as commander of the Keller Guard Washington County Marine Corps later. Semper Fi.
Pledge of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to amend our agenda under item A in Old Business to include the names of the vendors.
So moved. Change.
Second.
Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn? Yes, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve meeting minute number 1173 dated September 21st, 2023. Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes, thank you. Now, under Special Order of Business, we have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Mr. Sherman?
Proclamation. Whereas domestic violence disrupts communities, destroys relationships, and harms hundreds of thousands of adults and children every year; and whereas everyone, regardless of race, gender, sexual orientation, social economic status, can experience domestic violence; and whereas one in three women and one in four men will experience a physical violence at the hands of an intimate partner in their lifetime; and whereas last year domestic violent deaths left 103 empty places at tables across Pennsylvania; and whereas last year Domestic Violence Services of Southwest Pennsylvania received 3,240 domestic violence-related hotline calls; whereas last year Domestic Violence Services of Southwest Pennsylvania provided domestic violence-related services to a total of 2,170 new adults, children, and significant others; and whereas last year Domestic Violence Services of Southwest Pennsylvania provided 3,707 nights of safe housing to 230 survivors of domestic violence and their children; whereas last year Domestic Violence of Southwest Pennsylvania provided a total of 5,452 counseling hours to survivors, children, and significant others; and whereas everyone knows someone that is affected by domestic violence, whether you can see it or not. Whereas whether it's your family member, neighbor, coworker, friend, domestic violence affects all of us, and all of us must be a part of the solution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In Washington County, we encourage all county residents to raise awareness about domestic violence and remember that help is available while increasing efforts to prevent domestic violence from happening. Adopted this 19th day of October 2023 in Washington, Pennsylvania, Washington County, Pennsylvania, I am chair, I so move.
Second.
Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes, and to accept the proclamation today, we have Shannon Deely, who is Domestic Violence Services, Southwestern Pennsylvania representative, who had an awesome banquet last night. A lot of people came out to support your work. You're welcome. Thank you for all you do.
We just want to thank you for having us and for supporting us year after year. Our theme this year for Domestic Violence Awareness Month is "Everyone Knows Someone." And as you stated, whether you know it or not, statistically, everyone in this room has come across somebody who has been affected by domestic violence in some way. So awareness is everything. Your support is everything. We appreciate that some of you were in attendance last night. Again, the domestic violence is common, but talking about it and seeking help is not. So our ask this year is that you just tell one person in your life that we are here, we have services that can help you, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. We will now take a brief recess for photos. Not that many of us today. I had my purple on the last two days. Right here.
He may, I don't know. Do you want one by yourself?
I do, I think you guys are.
Thank you for. I'll get first to send.
Thank you. No, not lately.
Thank you, sir. Have a great day.
Thank you.
I'll call this meeting back to order. This is the time for public comment. Please be advised that views and opinions expressed by the speakers are exclusively those of the speakers and do not reflect or represent those of the Board of Commissioners, and the information has not been verified. First, we have Harold Close.
Thank you, first of all, for allowing us to speak. I do appreciate that. I'm going to second that with, I apologize for my lack of knowledge about the 911 radio system. As an elected official in North Carolina Township, we represent about 15,000 veterans. No offense to any other areas, but I feel our Public Safety Department is second to none. With that being said, I need help understanding, how do we go against the recommendation of the Washington County Public Safety Advisory Board that voted five to one to not go with MRA? MRA is a system that has been failed for many years. Very recently, we've thrown billions of dollars after a contract that has already been procured for a system that still doesn't work. I just don't understand it. Help me understand, as a township representative, we depend on paid professionals, whether they be consultants or people that work for our township. Help me understand that a third-party engineering company agreed to go with the Washington County Public Safety Advisory Board, and yet we chose to go with, and I don't know the gentleman, Justin Shawley, who represent or is from Westmoreland County that uses the 800 system. Help me understand how we abandon our public safety when they go into these situations and they need to be able to contact the other people on site. When I saw the gentleman from Slovan talk about what happens in Bergistown, if they go into the school district, there's no radio communication, you can't have that. And I don't even represent Bergistown. In North Carolina, we're very lucky. We have the ability that every budget year, we buy new radios, we buy multipliers, we buy the things to make it better for public safety. And yet, here we are again. I saw the interview. It was all about money. Mr. Maggie, those were your words. It turns out it's not all about money, because Motorola program was less. That's all I, I don't even know what else to say. Thanks for your time.
Harold, thank you very much for that, but that's just not true. Motorola wasn't less. I mean, that's inaccurate information out there. Motorola system came in after the bids were open. After the bids were open, and they knew what the other people bid, they came in, and they still didn't come in on time. We gave them a couple weeks to come in, and they didn't come in. So they, it's inaccurate. The bids were open, they knew what MRA bid, then they came in. That's what happened.
Harold, the bids were closed earlier. We've been over this before. I've made it, we've seen this. I mean, it's just not true. So, thanks for coming, and I appreciate it. Keep fighting the good fight. I appreciate you being here.
Next, we have Bud Cook.
From the 50th District, Green and parts of Washington County, where we invite you to come home and go big and have a ball, I am state representative Bud Cook. I'd like to thank the honorable Commissioners for my three minutes. But I'm not here to address you, but rather to address we, the people of Washington County. Further, to share our six years of pursuit of why regarding the LSA, local share account here in Washington County, for we, the people of the county. My LSA education began my representative freshman year, July 2017, with a meeting with the then Commissioners chaired by Commissioner Maggie. At that time, like many in Washington County, probably today, I had no idea what LSA stood for, let alone the LSA program and how it was set up and supposed to work. My expectations for the meeting were, hopefully informational, this quickly deteriorated into an interrogation of why. Why was I there asking questions regarding LSA? Everything I'm saying today can be found at www.redbudcook.com. All the documentation is there. How do we do business here in Washington County? Unfortunately, it appears that the Washington County politically connected, go by nothing to see here, please move along. Fact number one, our findings after six and a half years identified $10 million on account of four funds in the LSA program. That's a fact. $10 million on account of four in the LSA program. Why? Why would the Commissioners not want to address and correct this issue? This could be resolved by a forensic audit. We have nothing to see here, please move along. Our second issue. In our efforts of right to know, the Commissioners spent tens of thousands in legal fees fighting we, the peoples', right to know. Legal invoices can be found and reviewed at www.redbudcook.com. Washington County politically connected, nothing to see here, please move along. We recently requested that we rotate members as the state legislators, which was rejected by the Commissioners. This was supported by Representative O'Neill, who's one of my colleagues from Washington County. So where are we with we, the people, in our request for information? It's currently with the Auditor General. The letters are on the back, ask why. We're not going away. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Now, under Commissioners' response, I want to address all of the issues that were brought up today. First, Harold, we'll talk about the 911 system. And I appreciate what you do, and thank you for serving as a township supervisor. This is not the same system that we have right now that was awarded. There's a contractor that has worked on our system in the past, that is involved in the system, but it is not the same system. Second, ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan Act funding, is being used to pay for the system. The guidelines in the ARPA funding make it very clear. They do upgrades for properties and equipment, not new systems. So we cannot use that money to go with an entirely new system that was proposed by Motorola. That's number one. Or number two on that. Number three, the proposals which Commissioner Sherman pushed to let in December, the bids he wanted to award in December. The proposal by Motorola was over $10 million more for upfront costs. Our team went back and negotiated, and we saved approximately $10 million. The other proposal you received was after, that you've heard about, was after the award had already been done. It was after the award had been made. The annual costs to the 911 budget with the system that was chosen are significantly lower, and a big part of that is using a lot of existing towers and building upon In this proposal, we will be able to provide radios, a great number of radios, to municipalities and public safety departments. With the Motorola system, even if we had been allowed to use the money for a new system, which we were not, there would not have been money for that. So that's on the public safety system. Now, for Representative Cook.
Can I elaborate before we go on to Bud Cook? Sorry, Representative Cook. It's just not accurate. I mean, we closed this down early. We were supposed to be on Friday. You closed it down on Wednesday, and only one bidder came in. You didn't give Motorola a chance to bid in addition to that, which I have.
Excuse me, that's because they said they were not submitting another bid. They were contacted.
I don't have that in any writing whatsoever.
They said they would not. But you tried to award this in December, if you remember.
In addition to that, the two bids, Motorola is the only one that had service providers, which means it's the only one that actually had radios. Our one move we have right now with MRA still doesn't have radios. There's no radios on that bid. I just, we have to be accurate with this. There's no radios on that bid as proposed right now.
Commissioner Sherman, with all due respect, you are not being accurate with this at all. Not at all. The information you're putting out is not accurate.
I'm happy to provide documents.
Well, as are we and our public safety team. And you will say, no, this is not a question and answer. This is the Commissioners' response, but I'm happy to speak with you after, Harold, if you'd like to talk. But we do need to get the accurate information out there. Let's get it to Bud Cook. LSA, I want to respond to what you said. First of all, this process with the local share account was one that was designed to keep politics out of awards with these revenues. When the gaming legislation was put into effect, we had a very short window as to how are we going to disperse the funds. And there was different legislation for different areas that had gaming. Our representatives at the time picked specific regulations for our area. We decided, instead of allowing the Commissioners to choose, we would take the politics out of awards, and we would put together a committee that would review, independent of politics. And that committee was based on the Economic Development Roundtable that was already in existence. That committee has positions representative of the agencies that are providing economic development in Washington County. We did expand to allow to include the position of state senator, the position of state representative for the largest territory represented in Washington County, and a mayor and a township supervisor as determined by the mayors, by the Township Supervisors Association. So that's how that board was put together. This is all monitored by the Department of Community and Economic Development. This committee, when they do their work, makes a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. In all the years, the Board of Commissioners has not one time deferred from the recommendation of this committee. We have not added a project, we have not denied a project. DCED monitors everything that's going on. They are the ones that actually do the final awards for the LSA funding. As far as $10 million on account of four, as we have explained to you many times, that is inaccurate. There is always money that's sitting in the account, because as projects are awarded and let from DCED, sometimes the entities receiving the funding are not prepared to move forward, they're waiting on another matching grant or other issues. The right to know, you keep mentioning that the county spent tens of thousands of dollars, again, inaccurate. The right to know request that went to court was with the Washington County Redevelopment Authority, an independent governmental entity, not Washington County. I hope this clears up some of the misconceptions that represented, that perhaps you just were not aware of. So now, Commissioner Maggie or Sherman, did you have anything else to add? Okay, thank you. We will now move on to Old Business with our solicitor, Janet Grimm.
Thank you very much. Pursuitingly respectfully request the Commissioners award the bid for envelopes and stationary printing services and printed forms to the following vendors. Plank Printing Company, Kansburg, Pennsylvania, Consolidated Graphics, Bridgeville, Pennsylvania, Geiger Brothers, Lewiston, Maine, for the period of October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2024, with the option to extend for two additional two-year periods to the agreed-upon vendors. This is the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received. The bids have been reviewed and recommended for award by the Purchasing Department.
Second.
Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of Corrections respectfully request the Commissioners award the bid for flooring for the Correctional Facility Processing Area to Allegheny Installations of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $81,000 to be funded from Act 13. This is the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received. If approved, the contract will be effective on the date of agreement. The bids were reviewed and recommended for award by the Correctional Facility and Purchasing.
Second.
Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority of Washington County respectfully request the Commissioners award the bid for the rehabilitation runway 927 Phase 2 and the rehabilitation of taxiway A for the base bid and add alternate number two in the amount of $3,079,161 to Arovia Atlantic Coast LLC doing business as Northeast Painting Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. This is the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received. This award is contingent upon the receipt of grants from the Pendott Bureau of Aviation.
Second.
Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority of Washington County respectfully request the Commissioners award the bid for the rehabilitate runway, to rehabilitate runway 927, rehabilitation of runway 927, runway leading to Bruce and Merritlee's Electric Company in Pittsburgh, PA, in the amount of $615,557.26. This is the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received. This award is contingent upon the receipt of the grants from the Pendott Bureau of Aviation.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority of Washington County respectfully request the Commissioners award the bid for the construction of the South Side Taxiway Project to Caston Baker of Kansburg, Pennsylvania, for the base bid in the amount of $3,749,431. This is the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received. This award is contingent upon the receipt of the grants from the Pendott Bureau of Aviation.
Second.
Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of the Building and Grounds respectfully request the Commissioners approve change orders number 13 and number 14 with Stone Rock Group of Kansburg, Pennsylvania. These change orders are for additional construction costs in courtroom seven for a total cost of $22,735 for change order number 13 and $44,571 for change order number 14. This resulted in changing the amount of the current contract from $2,774,806 to $2,842,112.65. These change orders have been reviewed and recommended by Jason, I'm sorry, Justin Welsh by Building and Grounds, Pat Graham, Corz, McBracy Corporation, and Buck Horn Architects of Pittsburgh, PA.
Second.
Call please. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of public safety respectfully request the Commissioners approve change order number one in the amount of $8,000 to MRA Inc. of Washington, PA. Change order number one is needed to complete a series municipal permitting for construction occurring at 911 Tower Sites. Change order number one would change the amount of the current contract from $174,626,200 to $175,2682. This change order has been reviewed and recommended by Gerald Coleman and Justin Shawley from Public Safety.
Second.
Second call please.
Mr. Sherman?
This is what we're, I mean, we don't have a shovel in the ground. We haven't turned a screw on the project, and already MRA has a $50,000 change order. No.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes. Now, under Old Business, Cindy.
Thank you. Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a resolution authorizing the extension of a program to provide for a tax exemption under LURD.
Second.
Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a contract between the county and community cremation services for long-term storage and the cremation of indigent bodies.
Second.
Call please. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Planning, respectfully request the Commissioners authorize the submission of a grant request under the LSA Grant Program for the site plan and engineering documents for a new course arena at the Washington County Fairgrounds.
Second.
Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Planning, respectfully request the Commissioners authorize a $12,230 payment to replace heat pumps and add surge protection to Washington County Fairgrounds Hall Number Three, which was recently damaged during a storm.
Second.
Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Planning, respectfully request the Commissioners authorize a bid for rehabilitation construction on Hall Number One at the Washington County Fairgrounds. The project will replace the existing roof, provide for HVAC, and upgrade the restrooms for the facility. Costs are to be paid through LSA grant funds as well as Fairgrounds Gas Lease and Greenways Funds.
Second.
Call please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Planning, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a reimbursement agreement with the Department of Transportation in the amount of $2 million for the rehabilitation of Pike Run Bridge Number One. Costs will be paid 100% federally funded and no local matches required. Pike Bridge Number One is a historic metal truss and will be rehabilitated to preserve the structure and access to Cole Center Road. This motion authorizes Commission Chair Diana Ari Vaughn to be the signatory for the agreement as well as authorizing Commissioner Vaughn to execute the agreement through the state's ECMS system.
Second.
Call please. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Planning, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a contract with Dogwood Engineering in the amount of $620,400. in the amount of $620,487.90 for the design of Radcliffe Bridge Number Twenty-Three in Berwickstown Borough. This is 100% federally funded and no local match is required.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Finance, on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority, as agent for the Washington County Airport, respectfully request the Commissioners approval to accept a grant from PennDOT Bureau of Aviation in the amount of $3,308,817.
Second.
To rehabilitate runway 9-27 Phase Two and rehabilitate taxiway A, there will be a 5% local match requirement for this grant in the amount of $165,443.
Get a motion and a second on the table, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Finance, on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority, as agent for the Washington County Airport, respectfully request the Commissioners approve to accept a grant from PennDOT Bureau of Aviation in the amount of $668,966. For the rehabilitation of runway 9-27 and runway lighting, there will be a 5% local match required for this grant in the amount of $33,449.26. That's $33,449.26.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Finance, on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority, as agent for the Washington County Airport, respectfully request the Commissioners approve to accept a grant from PennDOT Bureau of Aviation in the amount of $933,334 for the construction of the South Side Taxiway Part B project. There will be a 25% local match required for this grant in the amount of $233,334.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Finance, on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority, as agent for the Washington County Airport, respectfully request the Commissioners approve to accept a grant from PennDOT Bureau of Aviation in the amount of $1.5 million for the construction of the South Side Taxiway Part C project. There will be a 25% local match required for this grant in the amount of $375,000.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Finance, on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority, as agent for the Washington County Airport, respectfully request the Commissioners approve to accept a grant from PennDOT Bureau of Aviation in the amount of $652,223 for the construction of the South Side Taxiway Part D project. There will be 25, there will be a 25% local match required for this grant in the amount of $163,055.75.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a renewal professional services contract with the Cameron Wellness Center of the Washington Health System. The purpose of this contract is to provide employee wellness services. The rates of the contract will remain the same and will be effective January 1, 2024 through December 31 of 2024.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a renewal E A P agreement with Gateway Rehabilitation Center, doing business as Washington E A P Services. This agreement provides services to all full-time employees and eligible family members. E A P services will be compensated at an annual contract fee of $16,143. The monthly fee per employee remains the same at $1.69. The effective date is January 1, 2024 through December 31 of 2024.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a renewal general services agreement with the Washington Health System, O M C, doing business as Washington Physicians Group. This agreement provides pre-employment exams and related testing for all county employees in job categories subject to PennDOT regulations. Rates of the contract will increase as previously listed and will be effective January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a renewal drug and alcohol testing agreement with the Washington Health Systems, O M C. This agreement provides general drug and alcohol testing services for all county employees in job categories subject to PennDOT regulations. Rates of the contract will increase as previously listed and will be effective January 1, 2024 through December 31 of 2024.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve the agreed-upon provider agreements for the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2024, and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve the provider agreement with Dr. Beth Bliss to complete psychological and risk of harm assessments for the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2024. The contract authorization amount is $100,000 and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve approval to submit a grant application to SWON in the amount of $1,300 to assist with costs associated with National Adoption Day. The one-time grant application does not have a match requirement and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve provider agreement with Behavioral Health Corporation to implement the Person-Centered Forensic Services Service Initiative for the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2024. The contract authorization amount is $233,703 and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve the provider agreement addendum with blueprints for the 2022 HUD Emergency Shelter Grant to extend the term six months to June 30 of 2024. All other terms of the agreement remain unchanged and no county funds are required.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve the provider agreement addendum with the Washington County Transportation Authority to administer the Medical Assistance Transportation Program for the period of July 1, 2022, June 30 of 2023. The contract authorization amount will increase to $2,150,000 and no county funds are required.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve approval to enter into an agreement with the Washington County Transportation Authority for one-time funding provided by the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for a driver retention program for the M A T P program in the amount of $235,713.24 for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30 of 2023, and no county funds are required.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a purchase of service agreement with Allianz for Nonprofit Resources, Inc. for the licensing and maintenance of their e-system software for the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2024. The contract authorization amount is based on the number of users but will not exceed $23,900 and no county funds are required.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of the Treasury, respectfully request the Commissioners authorize the advertising for real estate tax notices.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, respectfully request the Commissioners authorize the advertising for RFQs for an energy savings company.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Planning, respectfully request the Commissioners authorize payment of $21,787 to run a water line to the new shelter at Mingo Creek Park. Service will be performed by McVeil Plumbing, Heating and Supply Company, Inc., the contract of record. Funding to be provided from oil and gas lease monies.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Purchasing, on behalf of Elections, respectfully request the Commissioners approve the listed invoices for 2023 election support. The costs will be paid from their operating budget.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Building and Grounds, respectfully request the Commissioners approve an addendum to the professional service agreement with McBracy Corporation to extend the construction management services for the Courthouse Courtyard project at a cost of $2,300 per month until project completion and $76 per day for the final month of the project. Costs will come from ARPA funds.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Building and Grounds, respectfully request the Commissioners approve Addendum One to the G A I Master Services Agreement to extend the previous P S A agreement through December 31, 2024. Costs will come from ARPA funds.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Aging Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve an agreement with Kogeco U S LLC, doing business as Breeze Line, to provide high-speed internet access to the Bentleyville Senior Center. The cost is $144.98 per month for a 36-month period and will be funded from their operating budget.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of the Correctional Facility, respectfully request the Commissioners approve an addendum to the Lawrence County Agreement for the provision of housing Washington County's juvenile inmates on an as-needed basis, as per the contract conditions,